I'd like to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, January 30th, 2019, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, and we will start with board reports. Lake is ill tonight, so she might be joining us. And Mrs. Weaver, you are first.
Okay, so I had the opportunity, and along with Ms. Washington, we went to the Great Mills High School for their Navy Junior ROTC annual inspection. And it was, it took a little while, it was like about an hour. A lot of parents did have the opportunity to come and see their sons and daughters there. But the people from NavAir, along with some of the local recruiters, whether they were Navy or Marine recruiters from out in town, also came to help out. The Commander Pico from Naval Air Systems Command was heading up the inspections. So it was, it was really neat to see. The students were asked questions by the people that were coming through and inspecting, and they had to recite, you know, certain things, and it was, it was pretty neat. And then they also gave some awards for academics, and for physical fitness, and orienteering to, you know, some of the, some of the groups and some of the students. So, and then at the end, they did a pass and review, which was very impressive, and they have, they've been working on their, I guess it was more like their rifle team. They've done an excellent job. They've come a long way in the last couple of years. We do have, last year, we worked on getting another instructor in there. I think, Ms. Washington, do you remember how many students there are now? It's like 100.
170.
170 students in that program, and it's growing. Students, I really enjoy being there. It's a lot of discipline. They find out a lot about themselves and about their country. The other thing that I, when I talked to Chief Mack, who is one of the instructors there, he said, now because there's three instructors they have, he said during their planning period, and he says sometimes during their lunch, they also go into the classrooms to see their students that are in the program, just to make sure that they're doing okay, they're on track for graduating. And I think he said there's 24 students that are graduating this year, and he was saying that quite a few of them already have scholarships to different colleges. So he said, they are, you know, you talk about career and college ready, these students that are in the Junior ROTC program are definitely career and college ready, because a lot of them will be going right into the military from high school. So.
I had the opportunity to go to the Caribbean, starting on January the 12th. It was very propitious timing for me, because I saw on the news when I got down there that it was very, very cold up here. We had to suffer through 85 degrees for 10 days. We went to five islands, and I'm going to mention them for a reason. Went to St. Croix Antigua, we went to St. Lucia, St. Kitts and Nevins, and St. Martin. And what's unique about these islands is that in the 17th and 18th century, the European powers had control of those islands. They raised cash crops, which was tobacco and, and sugarcane. And the, the islands there were worth more money at that time than the total continent of North America and Canada, including Canada. So the, the European countries brought in slaves to work these plantations, because it was very, very advantageous economically for these islands. As, as it turns out now, tourism is the main source of income. It's a beautiful place, called the Lesser Antilles. And I had a chance to do an excursion over to Nevis, which is next to St. Kitts, and I'd never been there before. Alexander Hamilton's birthplace is there. What I didn't know was the three ships that essentially formed the first permanent settlement in North America, which was in Jamestown in 1607. It was Discovery, Susan Constant, I can't remember the other ship. But they landed at Nevis on their way to America. Now, of course, they had, earliest English settlement was in 1585 in the Lost Colony. But from 1607 on, ships started, instead of going to the islands in the Caribbean, started making settlements in North, in North America. So it was a very nice, very nice trip. It was very educational for me. I've learned a lot of new things every time I go there. If you have a chance to go to the Caribbean, it's worth going to.
Let's see. I spent Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday up in Washington DC. Mabe has a Federal Relations Network Committee, which I chair, so Sunday, Monday, we had a conference through the National School Boards Association on advocacy for education. And then on Tuesday, we spent the day meeting with our Maryland-elected legislators on the Hill. Very interesting. We had a lot of good conversations with both Senator Cardens and Senator Van Hollen's staff, and a variety of representatives from the House. So they, I of course took the opportunity to, they had some questions for us, so I took the opportunity to kind of tout some of the programs that we had here, one of which was Fairlead, another one of which was the Teacher Academy, because the teacher shortage that we have been talking about locally, clearly, is a, is a national problem. And they are working on several pieces of legislation to hope to get through Congress that would provide loan forgiveness opportunities for teachers, regardless of where they, they chose to teach. So it would not necessarily be targeted to, you know, to concentrated areas, but it would be a little bit more spread out. So that was, that was very encouraging. So.
Thank you.
I attended the Business, Education, and Community Alliance Scholarship Fair. That's the BECA Scholarship Fair. It was held at the Forest Center. And the BECA, BECA has been established since 1989, and the purpose of it is to promote business and community interests in supporting the St. Mary's County schools and enhancing opportunities for students. They give out scholarships to students. In 2018, 141 scholarships were awarded worth $180,350. So we, the Scholarship Fair was held January the 29th, the deadline for the Common Applications. You have one application to fill out, and you check where do you want your application to go? And they will give it to those scholarship donors, and they will make a decision. And the deadline is February the 15th. They are distributing them on March the 8th. And then on Tuesday, May 14th, the Scholarship Awards Event will take place at the Forest Center again. I want to thank the BECA Executive Committee, President Bob Schaller, the Vice President, Carleen Blondell, Secretary Velinda Shala, Treasurer Mark Smith, and the SMCPS Liaison, Tammy Burr. So that was a wonderful opportunity. Many families came out. They met the scholarship donors. Students were able to have a face-to-face contact with them, so when they looked at their application, they would remember that particular student. So there's another way students can help their parents, by decreasing the amount of money they have to come out of pocket for the scholarships. So it's a wonderful opportunity, and there'll be other opportunities available for students to get scholarships. Thank you so much.
I visited the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center for their Tech Expo about a week ago. A wide range of programs offered through the Tech Center, and that was the opportunity, that evening was an opportunity for parents and students to go through and hear from students who are enrolled in the particular programs, find out what the requirements of those programs are, what the benefits of them are. Many of the programs at the Tech Center provide college credit. If you finish the, all the, the full Culinary Arts Program, you can come out of there with 24 college credits. Our Criminal Justice Program that's there is incredibly popular. In fact, in the budget the superintendent has recently presented, he's recommended that we hire another criminal justice teacher. And the Allied Health Program is another one that's very popular, and, and that is another instructor that we're looking to perhaps bring yet another instructor onboard to be able to further the reach of that program. But whether it's aviation mechanics, or I visited the Fire and Rescue Program that is, is supported through the school system and offered at the Hollywood Volunteer Fire Department for their onsite training, very, another really wonderful program that benefits not only the students who are there, who can finish that program and come out and be a paid firefighter or paramedic, but also it benefits our community, because it provides more individuals who are trained and willing to participate as a volunteer on, with either the fire department or the rescue squad. And it, so it's, it's an incredible building, a wonderful series of programs, and with the number of students who are there already, and the, the interest that both Mrs. Weaver and I witnessed that evening as we were there at the same time, really an incredible jewel in the crown of the St. Mary's County Public Schools. And hats off to all of the instructors there, because over the years, it's, it's very evident that those instructors are there with their heart and soul, and they provide a great opportunity for our students.
Thank you. I'm just going to very briefly touch on, and then we'll enter in the rest of where I've traveled over the last couple of weeks. I did go to George Washington Carver for their Tilt Team Meeting, which is the Trauma in, the Trauma-Informed Leadership Team. It talks about how staff works with our littlest learners, who've often had very adverse experiences in their childhood. It was a fantastic, it was a fantastic team meeting. They've given me homework, so I can come back next, next month after I've read what I'm supposed to read. So I got some homework from them. I do want to talk about, over the weekend, I went to the Big Conversation, which was on dismantling racism, that was in Calvert County, hosted at the Patuxent High School. And it was representatives and organizations from St. Mary's, Calvert, and Charles County really talking about the future of education and the challenges that we all face. And one of the things that came forward was, we really need to recruit the brightest and the best and the most diverse teaching staff that we can. So it ties into our conversation about the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center and the Teachers Academy of Maryland, because the Teachers Academy of Maryland is our way to recruit within the county itself and take our kids, who may be interested in becoming future educators, and give them some absolute experience. I want to tell a little bit, I want to shine a little light on the Teachers Academy of Maryland Year Two students, because they've already taken their CPA and First Aid Training, and then they, just recently, last week, they took their Para-Pro test. So before you can become a Para educator in, in the state of Maryland and in St. Mary's County, you have to take the Para-Pro test. Well, all the adults who go out and take the Para-Pro test, the average score is 455. Our kids went and took the Para-Pro test, our high school age kids took it, and their average score was a 476. And of the 12 students who took it, all 12 passed, and I'm just going to read their name really quickly, because they deserve to have their name read, these are going to be our teachers four or five years from now. Alexis Abel, Sarah Bean, Alicia Carter, Gabrielle Gleisner, Gabe Gutierrez, Rebecca Guy, Hannah Hayes, Ashlyn Herbert, Jordan Higgs, Hope Kaler, Arabelle Kemp, and Cameron Levy. I'm reading their names today, so we might see them in five years, so that when they become our teachers, they can have a great night like tonight, where they show up and support their students, who've done incredible artwork. And so with that, I'll, I'll put the rest of the stuff in the report, but I really want to get on to recognizing our fantastic visual artists.
Excellent. Okay, Mr. Burr. And as he makes his way to the podium.
Yes.
I'm going to have to give a plug to Leonardtown High School, because I forgot at the last board meeting. So for anyone who knows the National Christmas tree up on the Mall, they had the 50 State Trees.
Yes.
And we alluded to it, but the entire Maryland Christmas tree was Leonardtown High School. So it was not somewhere on the eastern shore, it was not somewhere in western Maryland, it was Leonardtown High School.
Fantastic.
So. Not recognize that. My, my, my fault, I forgot about it.
Very nice. Leaving late.
Well, it's, it's Art Day, so.
Right, of course.
All right. Good evening, Board Members and Dr. Smith.
Evening.
Each year, Maryland First Lady Yumi Hogan, the Maryland State Department of Education Office of Fine Arts, the Maryland Art Education Association, and the Maryland State Arts Council partner to hold the First Lady Student Artwork Exhibition located in the Maryland House of Delegates. Each Maryland school system submits a piece of artwork to be displayed in the gallery. In October, Mrs. Hogan hosted an opening reception for student artists and their families at the House of Delegates. The exhibition was adjudicated, and three awards were given for outstanding accomplishments in visual arts. Mrs. Hogan presented each winner with an official governor's citation from Governor Hogan. Zachary Richards, a fifth grade student at White Marsh Elementary School, was awarded first place in the Elementary School Division. Tonight, we recognize Zachary for receiving this honor and for his artistic talent. Zachary, if you would please come forward, we'd like to present you with a certificate as well.
Zach, come on. Oh my goodness, well you had, now first of all, that picture of you, you got a whole proclamation and framed and, and everything, that's great. Well here, how about if we just get a picture, like this, holding this, you and me together, there. All right, now stick around though, we're going to be recognizing these other artists, and then afterwards, we can take pictures, and we'll have Ms. Steele come up, and we'll take pictures with all of that. Would that be great? Okay? Congratulations, that is awesome. Snow and tree. This is our winner.
We'd also like to thank Ms. Steele, the Principal of White Marsh Elementary School, for attending this evening.
We'll get a great picture up here. Uh-oh, we're going to another presentation.
Yes, we are.
I'll just stand here.
This is your art gallery.
Tonight, we would also like to recognize student artists whose works were selected to peer in the Second Marking Period Superintendent's Art Gallery. Each marking period, seven works from various schools are displayed both here in the boardroom and down the hall leading to Dr. Smith's office. As always, we thank the Board and Dr. Smith for their continued support of the arts. At this time, we usually welcome Dr. Smith to join us, but since he's already up here. So tonight, we'd like to recognize, this artist is not in attendance, but we would like to recognize Sarah Baldicino from Leonardtown High School. Next, we have Caitlin George from Leonardtown Middle School. Yes, so when we call your name, feel, please come on up.
Come on up, you're going to have to hold the certificate. And so we'll have you all of you line up, and we'll take a picture with all of you, then I'll say a couple of nice things, okay? Congratulations, very nice. Stay right there. Okay, wonderful. We'll say a couple of nice things, and then we'll hopefully take a break and take really wonderful pictures that we need.
Sounds like a plan, we're good.
You are so patient.
I, I know.
Stay right there, no, stay right here. Right there, perfect.
Next, we have Peyton Jamison from Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School.
Congratulations, very nice, thank you for sharing.
Also joining us this evening is Ms. Buckler, Principal of Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School. Next, from my alma mater, Chop田Con High School, Cara Perry.
Congratulations, well done.
Next, from George Washington Carver Elementary School, Misa Phan.
Congratulations, well done.
And also, Misa's art teacher, Ms. Ryan, is joining us here this evening.
Yay!
I knew we were one.
From Dinerd Elementary School, Chloe Russell. Also joining us is the Principal of Dinerd, Dr. Beavers.
Dr. Beavers.
And finally, from Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School, Fallon Taylor.
I'll just be right there.
And we have a whole crew from Captain Walter Francis Duke. We have Principal Ramsey, Vice Principal Dietz, excuse me, Assistant Principal Dietz, and our teacher, Ms. Huff.
Okay, now would you, would any one of you like to say something? Are you sure? Okay. I would like to thank you, each and every one of you, for sharing your incredible artwork with us. That makes Central Office a sparkly and bright and fun place. We look at your artwork every time we gather in here for a meeting or for professional development or something, and I watch people, their eyes kind of drift away from whatever we're talking about, and they focus on this fantastic artwork. And the ones that are down the hall, when they're coming down to see me, it puts them in a good mood. So when they walk into Dr. Smith's office, they're like they're in a great mood, because they've seen this incredible artwork. So I just want to say, thank you very much, each and every one of you. And could we all give these wonderful artists a round of applause? Okay. And if we could, gather up and get some pictures.
We'll take a five-minute break, yes, for pictures. And then, if you don't want to say, you're welcome to leave.
Yeah, I gave, I told them.
So do we have anybody for a public hearing?
I have to gather us back in, but then, yes. Okay, so you're back in session. All right, our first public hearing of the evening is High School Program of Studies. Do we have any comments?
We do not have anyone sign up.
Okay. Anyone? Last call. All right. High School Program of Studies, the public hearing is now closed. Next up is the 2019-2020 School Calendar.
No one has signed up to speak.
Okay. Anyone? No.
And it is closed.
Okay, so the public hearing for the 2019-2020 School Calendar is closed. The final one is the Fiscal Policy Updates that were reviewed at the end of the last board meeting.
And no one has signed up.
Okay. So that one is closed as well. All right. Let's see, public comment. Do we have anyone for public comment?
We do not have anyone signed up for public comment.
Okay, we are batting a thousand here tonight. Um, all right. Consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, then we will move directly to Mr. Wyatt, with the installation of security window film.
Mr. Burrows broke it.
He didn't know such things.
He disavows all knowledge.
Yes. Awesome, thank you. Okay, good evening again. This is a very short presentation, but there's been a lot of work on this, continues to be a lot of work. Definitely have to thank Fiscal Services, Ms. McCord, Bren Costner, for procurement efforts, and all of the efforts that we're putting forth for Safe to Learn, as well as Division Supporting Services. We're all working every week together on this to move forward with all of the safety and security initiatives that we hope to put in place. And you may recall that we discussed ballistic laminate window film on prior occasions. The purpose of this evening is to request approval contracts to Atlantic Sun Control and XLNT Tent of Mid-Atlantic Inc. for the installation of security window film at all SMCPS schools and office sites. You may remember, we did pilot testing, beta testing, so to speak, at the high schools this summer. We had, actually, actually prior to this summer, we actually had funds left over from last year that we were able to do some of that. It's been installed with great success. It's durable, very pleased with the look. In fact, you can't even tell that it's, it's there. So this is a component of identified physical security measures for all schools previously presented and discussed. The installation of security window film, or ballistic resistant laminate for all security vessels, windows, door panes, as needed, greatly enhances overall security for all of our school buildings. The installations will vary and are based on assessing our school buildings to identify vulnerabilities to exposure to forced entry. And you may, there is in the board packet, we actually started from the, Mr. Ives been out in starting the school site assessments, and we're actually measuring for what we consider to be different locations, and depending on the amount of glass that's in a building, and it varies greatly from school to school, the costs are going to vary to that extent. Again, focusing on ground level, entry points, that, you know, we feel need to be fortified as we go through the process. There was an invitation to bid issued, was posted an email on Marketplace on December 12th, 2018. The bid opening took place on January 4th, 2019, at 2:00 PM. Four sealed bids were received. Atlantic Sun Control and XLNT Tent of Mid-Atlantic Inc. were the lowest responsive bidders for installation and cost per square foot. And the purpose of this is to request your approval to proceed with the approval of those contracts and use of those vendors, and to begin the installation of the window film at all of our school sites. We're going to begin, again, with the secondary schools, and I'll work our way down. The advantage of having two contractors is, I think this is going to be a lot of work, and getting this accomplished in a very timely fashion, so. But that ought to entertain any questions, so.
Will you also be doing, like, the second floor in any of the buildings?
There are some very specific locations that we are considering, and also interior, we've also looked at some of those as well, because there are some locations that are, have a large glass exposure, and are creating vulnerabilities, if you will, to, you know, again, what we're trying to do is buy time and prevent vulnerabilities. So as we, as Mr. Ives goes through, each one of these individual assessments, you'll be hearing more about that, we have to have all those completed by June 1st, a report due to the state by June 15th. You know, there's going to be a very detailed sort of assessment of where all those need to be. So yes, we're considering all options, but primary focus again was on ground level, doors and windows, as the primary vulnerability points, so.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Wyatt, could you define the term ballistic resistant laminate?
It's, yes, sir.
Define that to me, and what can it do, what can it?
It is not bulletproof.
Okay.
And we've had some discussions about that before, and we did look at bulletproof glass, we've been looking at that for several years now. Bulletproof glass, there is various ratings for that, and for a commercial grade, the thickness is, there is a certain category that's required.
Right.
And absolutely, based on working with design and construction and others, it would, it would require us to basically reinvent the walls.
Right.
You know, the framing for the windows, everything would have to change to be able to support the weight of the glass. The resistant laminate is something where a bullet could penetrate, but it retains the structure of the glass, it does not collapse. penetrate, but it retains the structure of the glass. It does not collapse. And there's many videos, you can go online and just kind of research it. 3M has one literally where, even if they're trying, like with a baseball bat, to gain forced entry, it takes several minutes for them to be able to shatter that laminate enough that they can push through it. And then the net effect is, more often than not, it actually falls down on the person trying to make forced entry. So it buys us time. It buys us significant time, which is what we're looking for, so.
Very good. Atlantic Sun, have you ever used them before?
Yes.
So they're reputable and?
Yes, we, and actually Ms. Costner did references on both of these companies, so.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
So my only question is that once all of the assessments are done, then you'll put the plan in place as to which schools are in hierarchy in order to have the laminate
Yes.
placed.
Yes. And, and we're, and we're primarily using our initial assessments that we did many, many years ago. They haven't changed.
Mm-hmm.
Risk and vulnerability is based on crime density areas.
Okay.
Population, the size of the building. Those, there's a lot of factors that go into that.
Okay.
Those are the primary factors. Obviously, you know, with doing the front entrances, that's one thing, but that doesn't mean that someone's just going to go to the front glass and try to kick that in, which is why we're trying to kind of wrap the whole building.
Okay.
It's tempered glass primarily, right, around the entrances?
Actually, it's a film, so.
No, no, I'm sorry. I mean, the laminate you're going to put on, is that tempered glass?
Yes, it's, yeah, obviously, school construction rated glass. And there's many variations on that as well. I mean, there's safety glass, different kinds of things, yes, sir.
Okay.
So this is enhancing the existing glass.
Okay, if there was any question, thank you.
Okay.
I want to thank you for all the hard work you have done since you started working for us, and your job keeps increasing and gets more complex, and your job is never done. Thank you for all the work that you have done educating the students, the staff, and the families about safety. You have done classes on dating violence, let's see, drugs, misuse and abuse.
Driver's safety.
Driver's safety. You have so many programs, and I want to thank you so much for all you've done to educate students and everyone. So this'll be a good step in the right directions to keep our students, community members, and staff members safe. Thank you for all that you do and your staff.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate the information you provided through the bid tab. I'm guessing, since you've broken it into size, the square footage, that you will go with the particular contractor who provides the best value for that, that designated square footage.
Absolutely, yes. And again, this just gives us the option that, to keep on schedule, the expectations that we hope to be able to meet, to make sure that all of our students have the same level of safety. We'll be able to expand by using another contractor if needed, so.
Excellent.
Yes.
And once that report goes in, when would you anticipate? Do you have to wait until it is, has been approved before you begin this process, or at what point will you begin applying this?
Well, my plan would be that we could start now, because I absolutely believe that the guidance from the state is going to be, the purpose of the reports are to identify schools, districts, and others that have vulnerabilities that need to be addressed. And again, I'm not patting ourselves on the back or anything, but we have, as you all know, we've been working on this since I've been here. And some, some school districts don't have security vessels yet. You know, we have those in, in most of our buildings, so we're able to move forward. So I don't think it's going to be something where they're going to come back and say, we're not approving ballistic laminate. I think the state is leaving that to each school district and jurisdiction to prioritize where they may be in their strategic planning and implementation of school fortification, what, what's, what their next steps are. So our plan is, my plan would be that we're going to start this as soon as these contracts are approved, so.
And how long would you expect, given the square footage we have across the system? Are we talking six months? Are we talking a year?
No, I would expect, in fairness to the contractors and the work that needs to be done, for example, you know, going back and putting the windows in and, you know, for the security vessels and the security posts and those kinds of things, at least a year for the laminate to be completed. And some of that may be delayed, because we may want to wait till the security vessels in, because it's going to change the glass.
Right.
It's actually, and so there's going to be a combination of factors there. For the high schools, they were done with the front portion of the security vessels. It took them on average three to four days. It was no, it was less than a week over the past time that we had them do that, for them to accomplish Chopticon, Great Mills, and Leonard Town High School. So it's going to go rather quickly.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay.
May I have a motion for this recommended action item?
I move approval of contracts to Atlantic Sun Control and XLNT Tent of Mid-Atlantic Incorporated for the installation of security window film at SMCPS school and office locations.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Jaffers and Mr. Hayes. MISA.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Did you lose your voice? No.
I wanted to go 50 slides. Jason wouldn't let me go 50.
Not 50.
He capped me at 15. I was praying to go 50. Wouldn't let me go any more than 15, so we're going to, we're going to be quick. MCAP, I'll tell you, this is another leg of the MCAP, the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program, that we've discussed in the past. We've talked about ELA, we've talked about math, we've talked about social studies. Now, we are going to focus on science. And Maryland, like many states, is faced with discharge to administer multiple assessments with actionable data. So we're going to add science data now to the next phase of assessments in our quest to be college degree ready.
So before we talk to you about the Maryland assessment for science, I wanted to provide you with some background information about the new standards for science. So think back to a few years ago, I came before you and I talked to you about the next generation science standards and what that all entails in terms of the classroom shifts, the science instruction, and essentially what students are doing. So the new science standards are a three-dimensional approach, and you see on the slide there, the three dimensions: science and engineering practices, cross-cutting concepts, and disciplinary core ideas. The best way to describe what those are in the classroom is to give you an actual example from our curriculum, our fourth grade curriculum. So part of our fourth grade curriculum, students have to design a device that converts one form of energy to another. That could be making a solar cooker, that could be them constructing a circuit in which they have to make a buzzer make a sound. The premise behind this kind of instruction is the students are doing. No longer is it the teacher up there giving the information, the student passively writing it down. The students are doing the things that scientists and engineers are doing. So the, the building of the device, the design of the device, the building of it, the redesign of the device, is the science and engineering practice in this case. The cross-cutting concept is that existing thing in nature, that idea in nature, that spans not only science but other contexts. In this case, that would be energy and matter. The students have to have an understanding of what matter is, how matter is transferred. And then putting that all together, then, the last aspect of it, the disciplinary core idea, is the transfer of energy. So students, by doing this, by building this device, have shown mastery that they understand that if you build a solar cooker, you're getting the light energy from the sun, and you're converting that to heat energy to make hot dogs or whatever, whatever they're going to do with the task. So that, that's what the shifts entail, is more students doing and more active learning for this. So again, just, just being, the big takeaway with the new standards are students are doing the things scientists and engineers do in the classroom. And so because they are more active learners, because they're doing those science and engineering practices and using those cross-cutting concepts, we have to assess students in a different way. We can no longer just give them an assessment that is just rote memorization, what is photosynthesis, you know, what is the rock cycle, things like that, and they, they take a multiple-choice test, and then boom, they move on to the next topic. That's not the way that the science standards are set up. So with these shifts then comes a new way to assess the standards and assess our students. And so enter then the Maryland Integrated Science Assessment, or MISA for short. This is the new assessment put out by the Maryland State Department of Education that is aligned to the next generation science standards and assesses student mastery of the three dimensions of the next generation science standards. This slide talks about the structure of the MISA for grades five and eight, so there are a total of four units or four sections that the students will complete. The first three sections have specific tasks that they have to do, whether it be read a text, look at a data table, look at a graph, watch a video, do a simulation, and then along with those, they answer certain types of questions. The fourth unit, the final unit, is more of the synthesis part of the test, and it's going to be the harder of the tasks. And so this is where they're going to have to write an extended essay, or they're going to have to complete a simulation, and then from that construct some kind of an explanation. For high school, similar setup. There are five units. The first four are similar to units one and three for grades five and eight, and then that last unit is the more advanced one. So the types of questions that they'll see on the MISA, they'll have selected response questions, which are your multiple choice. But again, it's not about just rote memorization. It's about students reading a text and pulling information from that text. It's about them analyzing some kind of data on a graph, on a data table, a chart, a diagram, constructing some kind of explanation that way, or, or just doing a simulation online, and then answering the questions multiple-choice wise for that. You also have multiple response questions where students have to select two correct answers, and this aligns more to the Park style of questioning, you know, for these kinds of assessments. You have inline choice where students have a statement, and they'll have to go to a drop-down menu and select the correct term that makes that statement correct. Technology-enhanced items are click-and-drag, drag-and-drop, looking at hotspots, which is on a diagram, the students have to pick the correct parts of, of the diagram to answer the question that way. And then you also have your constructed response questions, which are your essay questions. They're providing some kind of an explanation of what they read about, the data that they analyze, things like that. So this is a sample from a practice MISA that we obtained from MSD-E, and this is from the grade five. So over on the left is the stimulus. So this is what the student would read. He would read, he or she would read that information. In this case, it's about earth spheres, the hydrosphere, atmosphere, and so on. And you notice that there's a data table there. So with that reading also, the data has to do with, in some way, with the reading. On the right is the question. In this particular instance, this is a technology-enhanced item where the students have to look at that data table and properly drag up the bars to mimic the data that they're seeing in the data table. All right, so again, just another good example of students doing, being able to really analyze that data, analyze the text, and do something with it, with it in terms of, of making the bar graph. The next one is, again, another practice MISA we got from MSD-E. This is from the grade eight, the eighth grade one. In this instance, you notice that there are three tabs, Station One, Station Two, Station Three. So this is about some sort of lab that they're investigating chemical reactions. So students would tab through Stations One, Two, and Three. This one, Station Three, is highlighted. So on this particular question, the students would actually take those graduated cylinders of acetic acid or water and pour them into H2O. When they do that, they'll see a reaction occur, and then a data table will plot up, will pop up at the bottom that will show what happened in the reaction. They will then take what they observed in the reaction and the data table and answer this two-part question. Part one, having to do with the chemical reaction. They have to, in this case, this is known as a hotspot, so they have to click the proper boxes of the correct answers. And then part two is the supporting evidence for why they just, why they selected part one answers for that. So for grades five and eight, this, this is the timeline of the rollout of the MISA. So back in 2016-17, all grade five and grade eight students sat for the MISA. The first year was just a field test. Sitting for the MISA in that year meant that they satisfied the requirements. They didn't have to pass it in any way. It was just MSD putting the questions out to all four 24 counties in Maryland and trying out the questions. Last year, again, sitting for the MISA counted. This time, it was operational, so we did get some, some form of data back, but the data does not count against the student in any way. This is more just baseline data that we can use here locally to see where we're at and where we need to go. This school year 2018-19 is the first year that the MISA's going to count for all of our grade five and grade eight students, not only in St. Mary's, but across the entire state of Maryland. For high school, it's a similar process. The only difference is, it's a year, it's a year back, I should, or a year ahead, I should say. So in 2017-18, last year, was the field test of the high school items. So because it was the field test, and because sitting for the MISA met the graduation requirement, we decided to test a smaller group. So all 10th grade students that are sitting in honors classes, honors chemistry or honors physics, took the MISA and just field tested those items. And those students sitting for that MISA meant that they met the graduation requirement. This school year, it again, sitting for the MISA counts as the graduation requirement. And it's going to be operational, which means at this time next year, we'll have data that we can look at that will be considered the baseline data. So we've made the decision then, because it is no fault and it meets the graduation requirement just to sit for it, we're going to give the MISA this year to all 10th and 11th graders, just to have a wider range of data, and that we'll have more students that would then, according to MSD-E, meet that graduation requirement just for sitting for the MISA. And then starting next year is when the MISA will count for the graduation requirement, according to MSD-E. So 10th grade honors students would take the MISA. Students that are in 11th grade that are in a non-honors track would take the MISA starting next year, and those students then have to pass the MISA to meet the graduation requirement.
And what's interesting with all this is, because it's an integrated assessment, you, you never hear Jason talking about, we're going to take it in biology, we're going to take it in earth space. It's an integrated one. So again, he's talking about the population, the cohort of the honors kids versus the non-honors kids. And I think that's, that's really what we should sort of perseverate upon, because this is an integrated science test. And some, you know, we're expecting some of these kids to have three years' worth of science to unpack as they, as they attack this particular test. So it's the integration of the science which is very important. We got all the data, and we finally uploaded it to Unifi. We were able to unpack this, and we were very successful last year in fifth grade and eighth grade. As you can see, we juxtaposed the St. Mary's County performance against the Maryland performance, and we outperformed the state significantly. In fifth grade, we were 9.7 percentage points higher than the baseline across the state in fifth grade. And similarly, we were 8.1 percentage points above the baseline Maryland average in eighth grade. So we feel pretty positive, pretty confident. And what Jason's done and I, we've looked at some of the regression and the correlations with our local assessments, and they're, they're highly aligned, and we feel good moving forward. Just as also another comparison, where the average MISA score is to the right, again, we were five and four points respectively on our performance. And again, what's great about the MCAP is it's going to sort of fall in line with the math in ELA. The cut scores will be the same. The cut scores in math will be the same as ELA, as the same as science, and that'll help all of our staff and administrators understand and unpack the, the results of the test much more seamlessly.
So the next steps then, to finish up, so we will be sharing this information with all the important stakeholders, with teachers, with principals, with instructional resource teachers. And then skipping down to the third step, following up with support. So let's say that there was a school that was a little bit lower in cross-cutting concepts. The data shows us that. So I can then go out to that school, meet with the teachers, and provide strategies and resources to help them get better at the cross-cutting concepts, at the science and engineering practices, whatever may be. And then going back to the second step, we need to make sure our students are taking as many MISA-like assessments as possible. This MISA's online. Things they have to do require an online assessment. So luckily, we have a wonderful platform in the county already in Unifi. So for the past few years, my teachers and I have worked very hard to make sure that our pre-assessments, our midterm assessments, and our unit assessments are not only on Unifi, but also MISA-like. We have the ability in Unifi to make multiple select questions, to make drag-and-drop, to make inline choice. We have these abilities. So we need to make sure our students are getting as much time with those kind of questions as possible. as possible. Also, working with Dr. Jaffers' office, we were able to obtain item banks within Unifi that are rigorous, like we see on the MISA, that are aligned to the next-generation science standards. So those are available to our teachers as well, as resources. At this time, this concludes our presentation about the MISA. I open the floor to any questions or comments.
Okay, so if you can go back to the slide where they have the beakers and the test tubes. Okay, is that something that, like, the student watches, like a video, or is this something that they actually do beforehand and then go and answer the questions?
So with that one, we would hope that this teacher would actually do this kind of experiment with them, so they have some kind of background information. But literally, that student would take his or her mouse, pick up one of those graduated cylinders, and take it over to the beaker, and then it would cause a reaction, and then after that, a data table would pot up, pop up, showing them what happened with the reaction. So it's act, it's a simulation.
Okay, okay. And then the questions, if we go back, I guess it's like a, go back another slide, yeah, there. Okay, so the, when you have the selected response or the, where you have to drag and, you know, slide the, the numbers up or the, the thing up, I can understand where you could easily say have, have like the computer grading it. But when you get to the, I guess, with the constructed response, or I guess the common, two-part question, the combination, who then goes through and grades that and says that, yes, this is the answer, or no, it's not? Because you know how, like, people have different ways of wording things, but really, it's all the same. So who would be going through and grading that information?
Those would be graded by humans. So what would happen is MSD would put out the information that they would want teachers from the different districts in Maryland to come up to MSD for a week-long session where they would look at these, these samples and give them a score, and then from there, they would set the standard. So those, those are graded by humans, by teachers.
Clearly, artificial intelligence can, can grade sometimes these short-answer questions, and that's what we're finding, that these tests are coming about, coming back to us a lot quicker with the results. And again, on top of the range finding that Jason's describing, there is a lot of artificial intelligent, sort of multiple operandi that, that, that go in and actually grade the students' responses. So, so yes, there is, there's really a combination of both, both eyes that go into the, you know, so, as they grade these tests. So it's, um, there's, there's susceptible to sometimes error if the kids, you know, you know, maybe they don't write well, or maybe they don't write as clear as they probably could. Sometimes if they don't have this sort of human feel, maybe the computer maybe skips sometimes, you know, correct responses, but oftentimes, it's pretty, they do a really good job of just making sure that all the answers are there, all the operational words, fragments, phrases are there, so that kids get the majority of the points, so.
What, what did you find is the turnaround time for getting the scores back?
It was, I'll be honest with you, it was considerable, but this was, again, the first go-around. With anything, more practice makes perfect. So I would hope that we would have a much more significant turnaround time, I would imagine with the Park, similar to Park, so that we can make better decisions structurally in a quicker time.
Okay, thank you.
You said this is online testing, correct?
It is.
How's the testing proctored?
It's proctored by teachers, whether it be the, the science teacher, or by an IRT, or by a homeroom teacher at the middle school, and then by the teachers at the elementary school.
So it's not going to be done at, at night?
Oh, no, no. No, it's going to be done during the school day.
How long would it, an average test like that take? I'm talking about in hours or minutes?
They, what MSD has said for each one of the sections or units, 40 to 45 minutes. That's what they're prescribing.
And that's, in terms of frequency, is that just done one time?
That's up to, that's up, I can, I don't make that decision. That's up to the individual schools, how best they, based on the amount of technology they have, the amount of proctoring, how, how they want to decide that they want to do a half-day testing in the morning or afternoon, or if they want to split it up, you know, one day a week, or once every day for five days, something like that. That's up to the schools.
They normally span that over two to three days, four, four units.
What I'm getting at, I'm sure you've heard the, the expression, when you're, when you're testing, you're not learning. And I've heard all kinds of numbers and read articles of, in some school districts, 12.5% of the time they're in the classroom, they're, they're being tested. Well, that's 12.5% of the time, quote-unquote, they're not really learning. So I, I applaud you for getting this data. It's certainly a great assessment, seeing how the, the students are doing, so on, so forth, but I just, I just was, I have a, sometimes I have a problem. We're testing so much that, and then all of a sudden, well, if we have to test a lot, we're going to test to pass a SAT, you know, score, exam, for example. And some, some schools do that, and they may or may not pass, but they might get short-changed from, from subject matter, other than just the, the testing mechanisms. So that's the only questions I've got.
You know, in, in every grade level, we're relegated to 2%, approximately. 2% of the time is relegated to testing, and that includes our required assessments. So we include the MISA tests as part of that 2%. So we can't, you know, by law, we can't go over the 2% at, at any time for any grade level. Some, maybe for eighth grade, we have, because we have more assessments in fifth grade and eighth grade, and maybe 2.1 or 2.2.
I see.
But we're not allowed to go past the 2%.
Okay, well, that's, I did not know.
Okay.
That was legislation passed about two years ago.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
I'm in the dark a lot of times, so.
Well, it's, it's, um.
Thank you for, for letting me know.
But to your point, though, they are making a, a more of a point to try to hyper-accelerate the amount of time the kids spend on the computer to test. So as we know, for Park Math and Park ELA, which will be MCAP, that's going to, that's going to be sliced in half. At least that's what they're talking about. So, so that is the direction of these assessments, so.
Very good.
Yep.
So I have two questions. The first one, this, the MISA score will go on the school report card, correct?
Next year, yes.
Yes, okay. All right. And then my second question, and so if the test, the test is comprehensive for 10th and 11th grade, or ninth and 10th grade and 11th grade science, and specifically talking about high school. So if I have a grade 10 honors student, they've taken what, biology, and what is, what's my?
They would have taken their ninth-grade year honors biology, and then their sophomore year, they have the option of taking honors physics or honors chemistry. And with the honors track, because they're not getting the earth-space science, we have integrated the earth-space into the biology and the physical science curriculum.
Okay.
So they're getting more of the curriculum in less of the time, which for honors kids, we, we hope that they'll be able to handle that.
Okay. So then 11th grade from, for the non, non-honors, they'll have those three classes under their belt?
That's right. They'll have freshman year, earth-space science, life science, and then physical science.
Okay, so then, so if I'm an 11th grader and I'm sitting for the test, how are we going to ensure that what I learned in ninth grade, I'm carrying forward to the, to my 11th grade year?
Well, that's.
Because like, you know, I mean, if I hated biology, I'm out of that class, damn, it's all, I don't care about anything anymore.
Right.
So how are we going to ensure that before, as they're prepping for that test, right, they're not going to be in a biology class, but do we have resources to review, or?
We do.
Like, how, how is that all going to happen?
We do. The, the nice thing about that last course, that physical science, there aren't as many performance expectations as earth and life. So what, what my plan is, is to build in within that course, review time for the MISA. So going back all the way back to the ninth grade, 10th grade, earth and life science, we do have those resources with the STEM gauge resources we've purchased.
Okay.
So we're going to build that into the courses.
Okay.
We've already had, like, fifth grade, eighth grade are already integrated. Jason can certainly correct me if I'm wrong. So what they've learned throughout elementary has been, it just, it, it arrives on that test in fifth grade. It's, it's the compilation of all that learning in elementary for grade five. It's the compilation of all that learning that they do in science in grade eight throughout middle school. So it is, we, we've already demonstrated that we do have success on these integrated assessments per last year's results, so.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for giving a comprehensive presentation to the board on the science testing. And it seems to me a lot of the teachers are already doing some of this in the classroom, because what I see posted on their school website photographs, I can see students are doing some of this already, so they already been preparing their students for it. So thank you for all your hard work and dedication to making our school system in the top percentage in dealing with the science assessments.
I think it's an interesting concept to, to pull all these pieces together and then have students demonstrate, based on their hands-on experience, then show that through this test. I think it will be interesting over time to see how students perform on it, and see if they can make the jump from what they, whatever experiments, whatever hands-on that they did, will it cut across to what they're being tested on? You know, I, I know we're going to more and more computerized tests. I am concerned about the turnaround time on these, but that's something that MSD-E has been hearing from us for a long time, is that the longer it takes for them to bring scores, give scores back, the more difficult it is to operationalize those results. So, but, but I think that's also part of why you give pre-assessments and, and assessments throughout time to determine where the students are, so you can make course adjustments as needed, so. Thanks for bringing this forward. I'm interested to see where it goes from here. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thanks, Dr. Jaffers, for the 15 slides.
For your brevity.
You can thank me for that.
It was unruled.
There wasn't, there wasn't like a charter graph. I wasn't sure if it was really a Dr. Jaffers.
I'll make up for it next time.
We rate you on inverse proportion.
We actually had an under-over going.
Justly, I, I think there were two additional slides that they took out, that did have the graphs, if I, if I recall correctly.
It was modified up to the end.
Yes, that's what I thought.
Yeah, you pay attention.
Yep, we worked.
All right, does anyone have anything else?
No.
Okay, so the next meeting will be February 13th in the morning, and then just a reminder that the public hearing on the budget will be, our budget will be that evening at 6:00. All right, we are adjourned.